Good afternoon, if you want, it's two o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and start this workshop. Just as a reminder during the workshop, if we no comments from the audience, all comments, questions, concerns will be at the two o'clock meeting.
Doug Banks is online.
Alright, so I need a motion.
Alright, so move extraordinary sort of things and blow our just.
So we have a motion, a second on the phone, all in favor say aye. Hey Doug, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Try again Doug.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Hear me now.
Yeah.
That was like commercials.
And for.
Alright, so we are ready.
All that, alright. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors, in record Russ wire with real estate econ metrics. At the last workshop, there were a couple of questions and four points that I was sent back to take a review of. I created the memo, it's been sent out, everybody hopefully has seen it. And what I like to do is go through that memo relatively quickly, I mean, as long as you've read it, I will, and I'll take questions at that point. Hopefully by this, and I know I've had some questions from Mrs. Pankow, and I appreciate you calling. And we did, we made some few adjustments, which were good, and I will go over those as well. And I had a nice meeting with Mr. Gepfert, we spent a couple of hours together, so. Excellent, so that's alright. I always enjoy having those meetings. Anyway, at the last meeting, the Board Supervisor requested the following additional alternative measures be run through the proposed amended and restated operations maintenance methodology. The first was to show the comparison of the Pelican Reserve and Gateway Golf Club's assessment calculations, because there was a, an understanding or what would make a common sense was the fact that you have eighteen holes and you have twenty-seven holes, that the twenty-seven hole golf course would be one point five in terms of what their assessment would be versus the eighteen. And I couldn't answer that during the meeting, I had to go back and show specifically through the four or five silos that how it is calculated, so that you do understand it really comes out to a one to three point five instead of a one to one point five. And again, it's because there are a number of inputs to that is acreage and all of those things. The second, and I will go over that in a minute, the second was put the salaries and wages back into Pelican Reserve, which I did in the first memo, but I repeated it in the second memo. The third one is to separate the Pelican Reserve Basin six water management budget and assessments to only those properties in Basin six, which I did, I went through and calculated them out. Did the golf course basically had, was basically one-third, two-thirds is the way it worked out. And then the last one was determine the landscape outside of the gate and split between Pelican Reserve and Gateway. And in the memo, we've come up with three alternatives of looking at how to do that. And we will leave that up to the Board too, and I'll have Chelsea help me with that, getting the bid and those sort of things. So we'll, we'll go through that. So let's start with the comparison of the Pelican Reserve and the Gateway Golf Club assessment calculations. If you turn to page two. There we go. Again, there were, there were, there were five parts to it. You remember when we did the calculation for the roads and the trip generation? We termed that for everybody, we had a baseline, so we shared that among everybody's trips. We had a baseline budget. And then we had the second part, it was the residual part, we took the residual, the remaining part of the budget that was in Pelican Reserve, and that specifically went to Pelican Reserve. And then we took the other part that was the Gateway residual and put that specifically to Gateway. The third part was the water management budget, fourth part was the parks and rec budget, and then the common administration, administrated budget. So if you go through, and then we start with the baseline road budget. It turns out, you know, there are the gateway trips and the, of the golf course and the and the trips for Pelican Reserve in there, that's a one to one and a half ratio. That's, that would be a common sense thing, based on the trip, because of the number of holes and, and the trips are equal per hole. So, so it was seventy-three hundred dollars for Gateway and about eleven thousand.
Russ question.
Yes, sir.
Our trip generation for golf courses based on holes or members?
We did this based on holes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was at least thirty, thirty trips per hole per day.
Because you can get clubs, exclusive clubs, like County County, that thirty-six holes and have a third of the membership that we have. It makes a big difference of which one you're doing.
The residual road budget, you know, residual at Gateway was one point eight million, it was one million at Pelican Reserve using the trip generation. You see, based on the total district trips by area, there's seventy-one thousand for Gateway and only eleven thousand for Pelican Reserve. And when you use the percentage of the golf course trips of that, it's pretty significant. And that's why it's higher at Pelican Reserve. The nine fifty-seven as a ratio to eleven thousand comes out to about eight percent of the budget. And the trips on the Gateway Golf Course is six hundred and forty-three compared in ratio to the seventy-one thousand trips. So that's about almost one percent of the budget. So you see, there's a significant difference there on the trip generation for the residual road budget. In terms of the water management budget, the same situation is there. We have within Gateway itself, six hundred and fifty-eight water management acres. The golf course is thirty-eight point two one. And in the total district water management acres in Pelican Reserve is only three hundred acres. And there, the golf course is fifty-five. So again, it's that ratio of the acres to the total acres for each of those areas. That's why there's a huge difference there in the water management from forty-two to a hundred, it's almost a hundred thousand dollar difference. But that's, again, it's that ratio. Parks and Rec, that's basically the same, it's, it comes out to be, you know, they're both thirty-three point nine one. And they both get a point one five EAU. And then in the common, in the common admin budget, we gave each an EAU of one per the number of golf holes that they have. So if, if in Gateways, there's eighteen, so they got eighteen EAUs. And in Pelican Reserve, they got twenty-seven EAUs. So when you look at the percentage, that is point two three, point three four, so the difference there is roughly two thousand dollars between the two. Add them all up, that's where we came to the sixty-nine thousand for Gateway and the two hundred and forty-four thousand for Pelican Reserve. Ratio, the simple logic like we talked about would be one to one point five. However, the ratio truly based on the benefit being received and the way we measured them, it came out to be one to three point five. So I just wanted all of you to know, that's, I couldn't sit there and explain that last week because there were so many parts to it. But that's, now we ran it down by items, so it gives you an idea why there is a difference.
I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So it seems from your analysis here that the basic issue is that Pelican doesn't have as many units to spread it both the cost over as Gateway does. Gateway has twice the number of units, people.
The shared ratio.
The shared ratio.
Yes, yes.
So we, we have a lot less, we only have the twenty, two, twenty-five hundred.
Correct.
And they have, what, seven thousand something or other?
No, it's five thousand.
Five thousand something.
It's a two, it's a one to, what, one-third, two-thirds ratio, when you look at the number of units.
So if you used holes on the common administration budget and you used the EAUs on parks and rec, why couldn't, why can't you use holes on the roads and the water management?
Because they are measured differently. The roads are measured by trip generation, so we have a trip generation calculation for the golf courses as we do for the residential units. The water management is based on the number of water management acres. So you wouldn't use it, it's not, and you can't, if you're gonna do it, you'd have to measure all under EAUs. Then you can't mix apples and oranges.
Well, what would happen if you did all of them on EAUs?
Well, things would be, it wouldn't be.
Yeah, and you're not measuring the true benefit. These are much better ways of measuring the benefit instead of just an equal assessment. This is more detailed.
Between the permeable and non-pervious.
Permeous and impermeous.
That's, that's the driving, because I asked similar questions.
And, and the trip generation is also a factor.
But the, the assessment methodology can vary different between the three components.
So I, I did that for you so you know what, what those things were made up of.
I didn't like it.
Well, I understand he was listening. I know, but you, I understand, because I couldn't explain it to you right here, I had to run the numbers so you understood by each one, but I didn't have any. The second one's put the salaries and wages back into the Pelican Reserve benefit measurement silo. Again, this is a, a repeat of the first memo where, under the assessment calculation with the salaries and wages, when you add them back to Pelican Reserve, the, the total Pelican Reserve residential parcels, your salaries and wages per unit comes to a hundred and seven dollars when you add it back in. So when you bring those salaries and wages back over, it's gonna cost a hundred and seven dollars for Pelican Reserve unit. So when you do that, and then we had the new, remember we have to subtract that on the other side, so then I had to calculate on the, on the overall general administration budget. I had to take those salaries and wages out, so it's a little bit less. So the new general assessment per unit, both for Gateway and Pelican Reserve, was a hundred eighty-two point four. So when you add those two together, under the residential parcels, you had two hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents if you take your salaries and wages back based on last, this budget. And the Pelican Reserve golf course is the same, when you, the current general was two hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. So essentially, if you take your salaries and wages back, your assessment goes up by seventy-two dollars on a residential parcel. And, and on the golf course, it goes up by seventy-two dollars. Because you're spreading those salaries and wages when you move them over here amongst seventy-five hundred units versus. Yes, I'm sorry. Well, no, because it gets spread out among everybody. Remember, the general, the general is seventy-five, seventy-five hundred units, it's both up.
The basis for one gateway.
So it's the fact that it's being spread out over seven thousand five hundred rather than the two thousand five hundred.
Exactly. Again, that was just a re, that was a reiteration of what I did in the first.
And one last question, I think you answered this before, but the total Pelican Reserve residential parcels salary and wages of two sixty cents. That's the seven or eight people or nine people, not everybody over here. We're not paying for any enterprise people in there.
That.
It's not enterprise and not parks and rec.
No, enterprise and no.
And it's not all of some of the admin salaries either, like me, Chelsea.
It's a portion, you gotta agree on the whole.
Yes.
That's what I got.
Because what, because some of your time.
It's because of the enterprise.
Yes.
So like sixty percent of my time is dedicated to the enterprise fund and only forty percent to the general fund.
Mine's the opposite.
Or it's the opposite, that's what we projected for this year, and it, and that could change year over year.
The other part of that, again, if I have the correct understanding, is this method is based on what you proposed to us last September after whatever the last budget, that we will have a reconciliation of the actual time sometime this year, so it could go up, could go down.
I don't think that's our intent, no, the intent was to do the fifty, basically it's about fifty percent of the total salaries goes to the enterprise fund or basically all of the enterprise staff plus our time, and then the remaining salaries is split, two-thirds, one-third.
Oh, so we're not gonna do the timesheets that we're actually doing?
That's not.
I never agreed with that. I thought that's the whole purpose of why we're keeping the time records.
Right. I believe Doug specifically said, well, if you don't use it all, we'll give you a credit.
Well, we're still getting it for this current fiscal year, but that is not our intent to do it for fiscal twenty-six.
Why not?
Because it's pain in the butt.
I wouldn't. Same reason.
Because it's harder to do that you don't do it. That's kind of lame.
We have a law firm, they do it every day, all the time, engineering firms do it every day, all the time, listen, deal.
So this gets back to the one-third, two-thirds, you're, somebody is paying for staff time regardless if we're here or not. If we're doing our, if we're doing waterway management, Daniel's doing waterway management, or if he's doing public works items, or if he's doing parks and rec items, how you, how we slice and dice them, that's part of that fifty percent, one-third, two-thirds.
Except that I've never agreed that we were using one-third of their time. I've never agreed with it.
Understood.
If we went back to the twenty twenty-one year, we'd be using maybe eleven percent.
What we, what we have done, and what you have reported has directed is for us to continue to track our time through the end of fiscal year, and we're gonna provide that report, I think we were gonna do it quarterly.
No, I don't.
Twice a year, twice a year, because we more needed to add in the PTO and the holidays, and we were gonna see where, where the numbers actually fall.
But if we don't react to that, I mean, if there's a wide disparity, I would expect that would be changed in the budget. Otherwise, I agree with it, why do it? If we're already settled one-third, two-third.
Well, ultimately, it's, do you wanna keep the, the salaries in silos or not? And then at that point, we're, we're projecting every year, we're doing that percentage sheet. We're trying to guess how many hours we're gonna be spending in the fall in the next year, whereas this is fifty percent period of the total salaries of the district, and that's shared amongst everybody, other than the parks and recs. Parks and rec saved in that silo because of how the Board chose to treat parks and rec with the different entities getting a proportionate share. So ultimately, it's up to you, but as, as it sits today, and I think as Russ, Russ is presenting.
Buckets.
You have three buckets.
Just admin, parks and rec, and enterprise.
Do we get the, does there a recommendation that recognizes the true burden of what we're actually spending based on the timesheets? Is that not part of the one, two choice number?
That's not.
I need a fourth choice.
The Board so wishes.
That's what I thought was the whole purpose behind.
Well, but that, all that boils down to, it goes back to the silos, because that's, we're tracking by silos.
I'll take your word for that, I don't care, all I care about is that we're paying for what we do appropriately. But we're not just using an arbitrary one to three number. Now, I'm okay one to three if we go back to the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two number, when we were eleven percent. So if you take us to eleven percent instead of one-third, I'm okay.
So are you okay with one-third, two-thirds if, if the tracking, true tracking is higher than one-third?
Yeah.
Because it's less.
Right now, you're, you're using less.
You're using, you're paying, our proposal is a third and a half, which is seventeen percent. Right now, you're using twenty percent of our time, so it's actually.
I've never seen that on all reports, every report I get, we're always green. Every single report you're sending me, with everybody's time, I've never seen it red consistently, month after, week after week, month after month. And I, I always go, I said, we're still underwriting, right? Yeah, well, if we're still underwriting, how do we need more?
But, but because of budget for twenty? No, what I did is I took the total hours, I looked at all the hours that are being, that we're tracking. So not everybody tracks their hours, but of those people that are tracking ours, which are those that had percentages allocated to Pelican for this fiscal year, of those total hours, twenty percent of those hours, not including PTO and holidays, that's actual time spent doing things for Pelican is twenty percent of the time that we tracked so far. So one-fifth of all of the time that somebody is spending physically here in Gateway is being spent on Pelican stuff.
So we're gonna continue to track through the end of fiscal year, but right now, we're discussing assessment methodology. And the option, we, we provided five options, and one was status quo. The Board chose, said we wanna do the fifty percent, the fifty fifty percent.
The thing that's driving quality was, in prior year, we had the staff allocation time, we've got a chart. It just had hour or percent of their time. And last year, when we did this, correctly if I'm wrong, but of the seven or ten people that were involved in this, everybody, everybody in Laura went up, somewhat, everybody went up a minimum fifty percent, somewhat, someone went up two hundred percent. That's where I chose it. If that number had been identical to the prior year, which may not have been fair, I would never have gone out there. But that was a hell of a one-year increase. And that's what drove us, let's do the timesheet, see what we're really doing. Anybody else think that's unreasonable?
We're still tracking, no, we're still, we're still tracking.
You're not gonna react to it.
But that's not our, it's not for us to react to, it's for the Board to react to.
But you're recommending one-third, two-thirds, so that's no reaction.
One-third, two-thirds of fifty.
Right, right, no, I'm with you.
Yes.
But that's not a reaction to.
Which is actually less than what you're getting, right? The percentage you would pay is actually less than the percentage you're currently using, so the projected percentage is about seventeen. Right, and you use, that's, that's not the same.
Yeah.
Percent, yeah, that's up to that.
The use of, like, things like you recommend, how can we cut back? We don't hold monthly, self-systeming now, you know? Bonds is every third month, landscape is gonna be every other month. I mean, we are ma, we are doing things to help ourselves.
So continuing to track to the end of the fiscal year, but I can tell you that as of the end of January, for the first four months of this fiscal year, you guys are using twenty percent of our time. So that's actually, you're actually using more than we're proposing that you pay going forward. We're proposing seventeen percent, and you're currently using twenty, so it would actually be a better.
And is it twenty percent of the ten people, or is it twenty percent of total?
No, twenty percent of the time, of the time that we're tracking for the people that are.
Not including benefits.
Correct, so just actually.
Physical, sitting, somebody was here clocked in, sitting with their body in a chair.
PTO and all those other things just added.
Yes, that means you're getting more of a benefit of going that way versus the current.
I, I just wanted to be happy, I, you know, I sit here and say it is cheaper because I think it's cheap. But it is what it is, but I just wanna have good numbers.
Alright, Russ. So Russ, basically to summarize, this putting the salaries back in the silos or not putting them there, basically what you're saying by your numbers is that it benefits Pelican Reserve by not putting them back in the silos, because if you leave them in the general administration, it is spread over more peoples, spread over seven thousand five hundred rather than two thousand five hundred. Okay. I don't know if I agree with that, so, okay.
For every category we looked at, every time I asked them to change something, we gushed it more, I wrapped my head around that and something.
Something should go down, eventually.
Just through dumb.
Okay.
Moving forward, it's how the numbers, I just.
I am number three.
Alright, number three was, I was requested to separate Pelican Reserve Basin six water management budget and determine the benefit to the properties within Basin six. And Mr. Xander had presented the budget to Chelsea, which passed on to me, and that's the table four budget that came from Pelican Reserve for Basin six. Go on to the next, go ahead.
Back up, remind me again, what is Basin six? Is that the one?
Basin six was a wind Dixie.
I'm sorry.
Doesn't go to the flow. Basin six water discharge goes up towards wind Dixie, goes nowhere near the flow.
The wind Dixie.
That's the difference.
Dixie one.
That's the difference.
Basin six is the wind Dixie one.
Correct, and it comes back to around the town center and back across, includes the golf course clubhouse, it's like on the southern.
Goes into the club.
Yeah, it's, and, but includes the southern, I'm just trying to give her an idea, that's where it goes. And it also, and it also includes C five, and also includes the blank parcel. And then the flowway that you were taking care of, behind wind Dixie.
We never called the flow with the outs discharge part. It's differentiated from the, what we call it, well.
So you all asked for the, the cost, I went directly to Doug Xander and said, hey, can you give me your numbers? These were it, I passed them to Russ, and Russ punched his numbers.
And I ran my numbers. So based on, if you go to the, okay, you're on the right page. I took the, this is the current total budget, the seven eighty-five, four sixteen, which included Basin six. So this is the base with Basin six included, but also included the eighteen hundred dollars that was added to Pelican Reserve when we did all of the flow, remember we did all the flowways and I did that, the math, you were paying for this, they were paying for this. We did it based on the acreage, and it turned out that, that Pelican Reserve, in order, if we were doing all the flowways together and everybody's benefit from it, it was eighteen hundred dollar difference, we call that.
Oh, I definitely recall it, I never agreed with it, but I recall.
That's how.
That phase worked twenty-five years, but now we're doing it.
You, I, you asked me.
We don't wanna talk to colonial, we don't wanna talk to that. You don't wanna talk to. I know, well.
Anyway, so you can see what the, what the assessments and how the per unit assessments worked out. You see inside the gate, outside the gate. And then I removed the Basin six budget amount from the base budget total, means that the water management budget line item of five hundred and twenty-six, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-four cents was allocated to, so I took the, the two million, or it's a two hundred, how much was that, I'm sorry, back to.
Two hundred fifty.
Two hundred forty-seven, yeah, two hundred fifty thousand, I'll just use the round number, I took that off of the seven eighty-five. So then I removed that, if you go over the, the normal, go back to the, this is the Pelican Reserve allocation and, and assessment calculation minus Basin six. So all the properties that are C five and are specifically benefiting from Basin six, and therefore do not benefit from the flowways in the area, and I am retention area, correct? So, so if we do that, you look at the Pelican Reserve allocation and assessment, this is the, this is everybody outside of Basin six. That's what table six is.
Right.
Okay, and so you can see the variance, the golf course goes up by a buck thirty-two, the single, the multifamily goes down by eleven dollars, and the single family goes down by fifty-nine cents. Then I went back into, I added the twelve thousand dollar flowway maintenance total back into the Basin six budget. Remember, we had taken it out, and I added that back into Basin six and showing on table seven on this next page. This is how the assessments came out. If you look at the Basin six, and these are the units that are within Basin six. So as you, as you saw, there was a small reduction on, on the rest of the units outside of Basin six. And then in this case, in, within Basin six, they went up.
That's all the commercial, basically all the.
Well, that's all the commercial that went up, and I mean, it's only by, you know, a maximum was a hundred and thirty-eight dollars to wind Dixie. That's how much it went up. And then down below, which is more important, the multifamily went up by twenty-one sixty-two, and the single family went up by a dollar forty-one, and C five only went up by seventy cents. So that's taking Basin six, if you wanted to do it separated.
I just wanted to see the numbers, Bob.
I showed you the numbers.
So from this, you're saying that it benefits Pelican to have Basin six out?
Well, it benefits part of Pelican, the part of Pelican that's outside of Basin six. Within Basin six, it goes up.
Benefits the residential in Pelican to have Basin six out?
Not all of the residential, the resident, hold on a minute. The residential, remember Basin six has residential and commercial in it.
Right.
Okay, so everything that's outside of that, all of those assessments go down by, I don't know, back to that, whatever it was. Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, the, the.
Fifty-nine cents.
Well, fifty-nine cents for the single family, eleven dollars for the multifamily. And then everything inside of Basin six goes up by, the single family goes up by a dollar forty-one, and the multifamily by twenty-one dollars and six, two cents.
My bottom line on that was, I did the exercise, I now understand the significance between the two, not with golf.
What?
Really, I at least we understand.
Yes.
No, but I didn't.
So part of our community, we're talking a little bit less, the total of all is.
It's more, it's more effort on most of the part every year to calculate it than it would be the next.
Same, so either, either.
For purposes of me, the methodology will be set up. Okay, what it will be is, is calculating the budget items between the two, that would need to be calculated every year.
So Doug would have to.
That's not gonna change, that's, it's, it's, it's gonna change, okay, you look at the cost, if the maintenance goes up a couple bucks, but again, it isn't worth the effort, we sort of like a three cent penny, three cents to pay for a penny.
For a penny, that's a lot of cents.
Okay, so you're saying then, Bob, that we should just leave Basin six the way it is in the report, the way he originally presented?
Yes, because I don't see a significant difference. I thought I might, I thought it could be as much as a third, but.
Excellent, okay.
Okay, and then the last piece that I have is number four, which is determine the landscape outside of the gate and split between Gateway and, and Pelican Reserve. There are, table eight shows the current HOA, and you use an inside the gate, outside the gate, it's really, and I was calling it HOA, but that's the way it was divided up before, just so we understood. Those names will change, because we really don't have inside the gate, outside the gate anymore. But that was just for people can understand it, and as you can see, the total. And as you can see, the total landscape services of, of, um. Within the landscape services was seventy, was eight hundred and seventy-one thousand. And eighty-seven point nine five went inside the gate and a hundred nine thousand, a hundred and ten thousand and outside the gate. And if you remember, the eighty-seven point nine five percent was strictly inside the gate. That's where that was a portion to. So the benefit was just inside the gate. The stuff that's outside the gate was. All the parcels inside the gate plus the C five plus the blank parcel plus commercial. So that's all, they all benefit and they, they all benefit in that twelve and a half percent.
And with. Russ, what the question was. Is it appropriate and do we want to take the outside the gate portion? In addition? Or do we want to keep it within that?
Well, and, and if you recall, if, if we were, we've been talking about that. I'm sorry?
I love when you say, if I recall, if I don't, but that's all. Go on.
I've been, I've been learning from the mask. Um. If I recall. The point was, is, is how much of the outside of the gate is actually Pelican Reserve's portion and then how much was? Everybody else.
Well, for the last twenty-five years, it's all been Pelican for this portion.
Yes, but.
That's all of it. So my question is why do we want to change?
We.
And, and.
Well, the only.
Like, like we do, the Basin Six thing, I would just like to see the two different numbers. And Chelsea had that conversation. I, I really don't have any understanding of whether it is a benefit. To Pelican to keep all of the outside the gate commercials. Like we have for twenty-five years. Or to change it. I don't know if it changes a nickel, a dollar or five hundred, but I'd like to know that.
Yeah, and I think, um, Mr. Shepherd, in, in this case, because you know. We did the, the, uh. In the first memo where I did the landscaping and I separated the landscaping from the roads. And. And it was benefit, more beneficial. For the residence, residential units to keep landscaping in the roads. And it was because of the trip generation. See, and in this case, we're talking about the landscaping outside. And then in the past. The way that was done was based on the EA basis because it fell within the administrative budget. So in this case. Um, if, if we decide that. That, that would almost have to become its own silo. If that makes sense. Because then, then if you want to do that, let's say that whole thing.
I have no idea if I want to do that. I just want to see what's costing.
Well, what, what I would, and, and it's really hard to do because you can't. The only way we can measure that. Would be is to take. All of the EAUs inside the gate, all the EAUs outside of the gate. And which would be the, the same way, which was the way it was done before, and take that landscaping amount. And make that based on the EAUs. Because you can't, you, you can't use trip generation because we're, our trip generation. calculation includes you're inside the gate. Which is different than what they are outside the gate. So when they measure that inside the gate, calculation of the four point four trips per unit, that's because you're inside the gate. And that's, that's what happens when you have an age restricted. Community. But when you're outside of the gate. It's, then it's everybody. Then, then do we go, if you wanted to do a base on trip generation, then do we go to the single family nine point? Five versus four point four, or if you wanted to do it. My recommendation would be is to do it based on EAUs both inside the gate and outside the gate.
Well, my question is lots. I don't care what that's all. But all of that money. As we have had for twenty-five years, stays where it is. Was seen. Versus if it gives us this new way in content of the game, unless even. Are our commercial properties paying ten dollars? A number, whatever. And Pelican, Pelican, we get the benefit of a ten dollar income like we had, but now we're only getting a three dollar. And the other seven dollars that was never a real report and now comes. So that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around. That's differential. If we left it as it was out every calculation, every time, it would all stay in colors. I'll see you in fact.
The, the. The other way to calculate it. And, and I haven't done this, but the other way to calculate it would be is we take that landscaping, say, here's Pelican Preserve. And that gets, you know, allocated. Probably on, because it'd be a part of the roadway budget because it's trip generation. So then it, everybody would get the same inside except for the golf course. That would be the first thing. If we could calculate, how much is that budget from your wall to the sidewalk? All the way out plus the two sides. That amount. And then the rest of the amount would go over to the gateway side. Because the trips of C five and the commercial all goes over there and they would be paying out of that one.
But why would they go there? Right back to my question. Why would they go anywhere? Why do you want, why? Should we want to remove it in, in, in any way, shape or fashion?
I'm saying that's how it will be done in terms to be able to do a measurement. If you wanted to keep it. Over there and you wanted to keep it in the Pelican Preserve budget. You wanted to keep it over there, the EAU method would be the best way to do it.
Whatever. I just want to see what the differential is, what we have or don't have.
I would have to run that, you know, to say, hey, listen.
Again, we, every time I've asked it, it's always been negative since then. This will probably be negative too, but I just want to see.
I understand. I understand. And so there were, there were three.
So what does, what does table eight tell me?
Table eight is the current way it is split. So in other words, within the, the, inside the, the gate. Seven hundred sixty-six thousand in terms of, of the landscaping portion and outside the gate was a hundred nine or a hundred ten thousand. So the seven hundred sixty-six was split among all of the residents inside. The gate. That's going to change, that's going to change a little bit, only because now we're doing it. If we keep landscaping with roads. That just means that the golf course is going to be paying. Based on their trip generation. Yes, sir.
Russ, what's, what, why are you using the term HOA? Inside HOA outside?
Because that's, the HOA was. When we were doing the methodology a long time ago, they had that calculated. That's how it was done. The HOA is.
Agreement that doesn't exist anymore.
Correct.
So why are we still using that? Pedigrams, sure.
So I think.
It was done anyway for the fiscal twenty-five budget, which we, that was correct and we still, when we did the budget.
Okay.
What the board, what the board requested of Russ was current to propose. So this is using current, the current numbers with the current percentage split.
And, and none of us ever liked it, but it's just what we had.
Yeah.
We all understand it. That's your question. Okay.
Bob, too.
Yeah.
I, I know you keep asking why. For, for me, I would not be doing this district any due diligence if I didn't ask that same question back to you. Why are we only doing twelve point oh five split? How, who came up with that number? Are we treating tree line like we're going to treat Gateway Boulevard in Griffin where it's a cost share amongst everybody? If we want to keep it status quo in Pelican and just the commercial parcels pay that. So. Part of this. Process with Russ is looking at everything with a fresh set of eyes. So. I think you, you've run the numbers or you've looked at.
I have not.
Have a chance because it was cumbersome, right? And you have no time.
Well, we haven't, I'm trying to get the direction to understand how we do that. Now we got the budget numbers. And the first thing is how are we going to split that? Remember, because we get, that's why we need the alternatives. And that's what I was going to let you present. But then can we turn around and say? If we do have an, an exact, not an exact, but an actual number for the Pelican Reserve. Amount. And then, and that gets put into the, the landscaping and roadways based on trip generation. Then the outside would be. Over with the gateway side because they already calculate. C five and all of them with the triple.
Well, see, I'm teaching. When I'm saying outside the gate, I mean, C five stays and the commercial area stays where, as historically stated.
Or the landscaping. For everything.
Saying for everything.
I can't.
Do it for the water. And we're doing it for the, um.
But you can't, I can't do that on trip generation.
Why not?
Because.
We, we did it for twenty years. Now I can't. That's wrong.
No, what we did for twenty years was you had that twelve and a half percent and then it was split from, based on the EAUs. If we're going to keep it as a trip generation. Then that amount goes over to the gateway as do the trips go over to gateway.
So what, what I suggested, right, wrong or indifferent. And from a management perspective, I, I see tree line like Gateway Boulevard or Griffin. Right? It's a common road. Everybody uses. From Pelican's wall. To the back of walk. That, that landscaping and that maintenance responsibility. In my eyes would fall to Pelican because that's part of their landscape buffer easement, which they're required to do as part of their development for us. Everything else. Minus, minus, minus your monuments of that colonial. Everything else would be shared here because, and, and I, and I, I suggest keeping the monuments with Pelican budget and Pelican responsibility. Because if you, if you do ever choose to sell those, that money's going to go back into the Pelican pot. Right?
No, I, I got that. I'm with you.
But that's, that's.
They are very different. I mean, they're fundamentally different because, you know, all that area city ports are versus over here, nothing to see with us. So, I mean, there is a rationale to, to, to separate it. I don't know that it must separate.
Well, tree line is the responsibility of Lee County.
Just changed, right?
No, no. Since tree line was put in, it's been the responsibility of the county.
Yeah, I don't want.
No, the maintenance responsibility of tree line avenue falls with Lee County.
Even though it's in the city.
Always. And even though it's within the city, yes.
Lee County of that portion.
Yes.
Or portion, or suddenly portion. Question else, did the northernly portion come Pelican Reserve Boulevard? That's how we got it when there was only a movement. And I'm still trying to understand why we changed.
And what did we just?
We turned over.
We just gave, we just had an agreement with the county on, for tree line.
For the streetlights. We turned.
For the lights.
Streetlights. We turned those over to the county.
I.
And we had to spend money to upgrade the lighting to their standard.
Yes.
Before they would accept.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, how difficult.
So then, Russ, tell me what table eight and table nine mean to me then.
The, um. Table eight is the current situation. Table nine. Hang on a minute. This is the, the, uh, proposed landscape budget. From that we just got from Ameriscape, correct? And did you want to also use?
So the, the, the landscape contracting pricing that the city in front of you how it did. Was exactly how I just mentioned, from back of walk to wall. And monuments stays Pelican, quote unquote, inside the gate. And then from front of walk, the rest of it is outside the gate. Now, we did get an estimate from Ameriscape based on these numbers, how much that from back of walk to your wall. For the, and the. We got, we got that number from them and so we have that. Russ, just have, we've got to crunch those numbers.
It was thirty-nine.
And this is based on historically what they've done. This is what Ameriscape has done for us the last twenty-five.
And that, that amount is thirty-nine thousand for them to maintain from the wall.
One little.
The sidewalk, yeah.
And the mine.
But these mean to me as far as the methodology.
Well, did you try and explain the three different? What, what we do.
No, you can.
Okay, what we did, uh, the proposed contractual budget, a portion on the original inside and outside percentage allocation. Which was the eight eighty-seven and a half versus the twelve and a half. That came out to seven, the new one is eight seventy-nine, nine eighty-nine is the total budget. So where you split it that way, the outside of the gate would be a hundred and six thousand. If we were to, um. I combined the hundred and sixty, the hundred and sixty thousand from Ameriscape. Which is the outside the wall landscape budget back on table nine. And the, um, thirty-nine thousand proposed cost to maintain the Pelican Preserve wall, we put that all in there. That means the outside the gate is going to be, uh, approximately two thousand.
Two hundred.
There are two hundred thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand, yeah. I had to add two zeros to it. Two hundred thousand. And then. If we were to another alternative, take the proposed Pelican Preserve landscape budget for the wall to sidewalk. And add that back to inside the gate. As shown, as shown in table twelve. So the outside of the gate becomes a hundred and seventy thousand and the. Inside the gate becomes seven hundred nineteen thousand, which will be, again. The inside the gate would be based on your trip generation. And then the outside the gate.
Well, I don't need any discussion on the inside again, where, where, where we are.
I, I understand.
Yeah, it's all that.
But all this is just an allocation of how that outside, outside the gate gets split.
Okay, but what does it mean for the methodology? How do I translate these numbers into?
That goes back.
Five dollars more or five dollars less?
We haven't got there yet. That was my point. Because how, we first needed to figure out. Which, how much is going to be inside and how much is going to be outside? Then I could put them into, you know, my recommend, there's two recommendations. The first recommendation is, is, um, we do it all. On, um, on the EA, if you wanted to keep them in your budget, it would all be on the EAU method. Everybody would have the one and they would split that. The second way is we could split the outside the gate. Pelican Reserve portion of forty thousand dollars would go inside the gate. Because you're calculating that and that would still be based on trip generation. The outside the gate at that point will go over to the gateway side, be done on trip generation.
Suppose we took everything outside of it.
If you took everything outside of the gate, I can't.
Inside the gate, the numbers, I think, seven nineteen.
Yeah, but I can't, the, the thing is, I can't measure the outside on trip. Generation. That is going to have to be, as I talked about, on, on a per EAU basis.
If you take the piece from the sidewalk to the fence.
Yep, forty dollars.
Pelican side.
Mm-hmm.
And however you computed C five. Do the same one. And we're not involved in it at all. Then it all comes to you.
If you wanted to put it all under. The same budget, is what you're saying.
I think so. I mean, let's just break the baby right now. Say, there's the inside and there's the outside. No more talking.
The out, I, I understand. And what I'm saying is the outside portion is split between, it's not, not, I use the word split. It's divided between inside the gate and outside the gate. Normal landscape budget, because remember when I pulled it away, it was more expensive on a per unit basis. We use the trip generation method. So I take your forty thousand dollars and put it. Inside the gate. Okay, and, and then that would be done on trip generation. The other side would be go to gateway. Now, if I took all of it. Outside the gate, a hundred and six, two hundred thousand dollars total. Say that's what it was. Then I can't measure one on trip generation and the other on EAU method.
Russ, would we not just add that to our roadway budget on the greater gateway side and incorporate those, those parcels in our roadway budget?
That's what I said. That would have been, that would have, if we would have taken the forty thousand, put it inside the gate.
Yeah.
Then we would put that outside the gate, we'd go over to the gateway side.
So basically this chart here.
You're alone.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So how? I don't care how you do it. But is there some way to compare what we have right now? To what is being proposed?
There is, but I haven't done that yet. So we decide.
You do that for next time.
Let's, if we can get direction from the board. So. The first question is. Do you want to keep split like boss says, split everything just inside and outside? That's one option. Option two is. The landscape bumper wall. Stays inside, so thirty thousand dollars goes in, inside the gate. Everything else is outside. That make sense?
I'm with you.
That's option two. Right? And then option three is status quo.
And I'm not sure, I'm not sure if there's any impact at all. I mean, if we take, if we take the outside. And treat it as part of Pelican however we want to express. Versus just having everything that's out is out, but everything that's out is going to be divided by the. Seventy-five hundred times.
Yes.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm okay with that. Just, let's not call it anymore.
And that's what you're proposing.
About inside now.
In your report, isn't it?
There's. In this particular one, we haven't gone through that portion of that yet. And the reason I say that is because if we were to take. We do inside and outside. To me, it was, I said, it's be measured like the EAU basis. The outside portion of that budget, the hundred and sixty thousand. You see? And, and, and if we take and put yours inside. Then that hundred and sixty thousand will be done by the EAU method, which is the current method. That's what we do now. And that's how it's all based, so.
Yes, Chelsea, another question in the middle of this. The the landscape budget we're currently looking at. Is this outside portion in that landscape budget?
It's the pricing that we received was inside, outside, outs- outside, outside is from. Front of walk.
Back.
To the other side of the road, to the other side of the right way in C five. Your wall, your wall maintenance is inside the gate.
And I'll say, we just get away from that entirely, the whole, anything that's outside is outside.
That that's, that is the policy.
I know, and I'm just trying to get it straight by him. If we just take everything that's outside, it's outside, it's it's all gateway. It's common, as we're saying. And then the only thing that Pelican is dealing with, with landscaping and roads is what's his. Is that enough?
Do you want to keep the monuments too?
Yeah.
Okay, inside and the monuments.
Inside.
That's a policy.
Well, and and I gather, I'm sure I'd like to know what the impact of is, though, if we do it either.
Well, the financial impact will be the forty thousand dollars in backup. He says.
The forty thousand dollars, the forty thousand dollars would be thrown into the general budget versus inside the gate.
Yeah.
That's the difference. Because you're spreading that and that's based on trip generation, so you can't really say, well, it's two thirds one, so it doesn't quite work that way.
But the value of that is the forty thousand, uh, current, but then whatever the latest.
Yes.
The one we're talking about is whether we treat the wall, with the sidewalk through the wall. As common gateway items to the.
Correct.
Resident.
Correct.
And I'm saying, let's treat it like if we're going to go this way. Let's just treat it like it's all outside of all, we won't ever have that conversation anymore. I don't know what the impact is going to be, but. I think it's going to hurt anybody.
No, you're spread it, you're.
The forty thousand dollars instead of being paid by the twenty four hundred pounds, now going to be paid for about a seventy four percent.
Yeah, so you'll get your portion.
Yeah.
Based on trip generation.
So that, that's clean, we don't have to have any more than scrap of it now.
Yep. Agree.
So can you have that first next time? Well, I think what Chelsea says. It's asking, it's the direction from the board, if that's what we want.
And then, yeah.
Okay, I would, I would like to, I would like to see that.
We need to take action with any.
So monuments, a tree line. And inside stay inside.
Onions are tree line.
Everything outside the wall, outside the wall. But you good with that, Russ?
That's fine.
Alright, so then Russell crunch the numbers for your, for your next meeting. Um, and bring that back. Was that the last?
Anything else?
That was it.
Okay, um, I was wondering because we cannot talk to each other. Except here at the meeting and at workshops, so. Um, I did a lot of looking at and called Russ a couple of times about the pond slash waterways. Um, that whole section. And. In my humble little brain, it basically came down to. Um, a difference, the difference between twenty twenty and twenty twenty five. Was that in those intervening years, there were weers installed. And so that, um, I believe. The way we have it right now is that there is one weir that stayed with Pelican. And we have to pay for the maintenance of it and all that sort of stuff. And all the other weers went to gateway. And I was wondering, um. The board here, is that your understanding of it also?
My understanding is. Pelican had nothing to do with any of it. Because Pelican had nothing to do with the flow. It just happened to physically come down in our community. When all.
I thought we paid for a weir.
No, we paid for an adjustment. All the weers have have always been in blood.
Yeah.
But based on the experience with some flooding. We collectively decided that we wanted to have an adjustable weir. In in gateway and an adjustable weir. Two of them.
We had it in gateway, we didn't have it in Pelican. So we.
We didn't have the adjustment, I thought, no, we did, we did want to get, get.
Gateway had, Gateway had two weers, both of them had adjustment capability. Pelican had three weers and had no adjustment. Three.
One is out at seventy five, that's not.
But that's still part of the flow. All of those are non adjustable. It's water over the dam, if the water ran over the dam, it doesn't go.
Right.
That that you can't get any more water because there's no sluice gate or any device.
So we added the weir, the adjustable portion of it, help ourselves in the in the event of a future. Yeah, and Pelican Preserve paid for the weers that we put in.
Okay.
The gateway paid for their ones.
Those were paid for.
Who paid for what?
They paid for the bond funds, they, they came out of it, but yeah. I just want to go back to one speed. Okay, no, wait, wait, can we finish this? So if, because you guys have dealt with ponds and waterways much more than I am. So are you comfortable with? Splitting it that way, the way? They, the way Russ is proposing. Where basically one of them, that expense still stays with Pelican and the others.
The the only change, the only change that I know of, what we're doing. And what Chelsea and Russ have proposed. Is that now Pelican is going to be sharing for the maintenance costs or the flowway, or for the last twenty five years we did not. That was exclusively an expense of the dividend.
Okay.
So and the reason we.
And we're sharing.
Have we carved basis.
Because their water comes through us.
Well.
You're better than that.
Everybody's water fills into the flowway, that's why we're doing.
And the, and that's why the board, we took basin six out of there. Because we don't, basin six water doesn't go.
That's an exception.
Yeah, yeah, that's the exception. And we recognize that. So, you know, I don't like it, I'll still complain about it.
But the way we got it now, I believe, is correct.
I would feel a whole lot better if it was the way we did forced Arborwood Colonial.
Why do you know that was coming?
I would like to throw dams up there and let them keep them.
Yeah.
That's their part, that should be too. So, so basically, the water portion of what he's presenting. You guys are very comfortable.
A lot comfortable.
And Vlad, you two, you're comfortable with it, with the water way? Yeah. Yes, the way Russ is presenting it and the way things are being split, yes, okay.
Okay, I just wanted to. Yeah, I just want to go back to landscaping because I was looking at my. So. What do we stand with Timber Ridge and the easement? From their, are we being for, is that getting divided by the gateway residences or that's getting, because that's going to be the same issue that Pelican, it might.
I didn't actually do the question, I'm sorry.
Hold on, hold on.
So Timber.
Before he comes, that question is a chosen question.
Timber Ridge, when that community was constructed, they put their wall right on the edge of the right way. And so they have been contesting with staff. That. The the landscaping outside of their wall, although required as part of their landscape buffer easement and approval of their development order. That it's technically in the right way and it's technically district responsibility.
So in other words, it's got a, like a ten foot buffer easement, five feet in, five feet out, and the five feet's not their property.
Yes. So just like.
So that's.
Do the attorney. Yeah, I thought the five feet was their property.
The the same.
But it's the same concept that what I'm thinking is this, is that, is that, you see what I'm going, is the same concept that would happen. If the Pelican Preserve, if we take it from that wall, what I foresee is them asking for the exact same thing. Which is.
Is 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 that true? Is.
Well, they they have, I mean, my last year I met with the their board and that's what they wanted. I remember when we had a.
But my question is.
I believe it was medium key and that's what they wanted.
But my question is, is the property line and the ownership. Which is inclusive of the buffer easement included in Pelican or outside? Big difference. Because what you're saying at, what you're saying at Timber Ridge, they've got five feet in and five feet out. Well, given the greens, we have five feet in and five feet out, but the five feet out, we owe. They're saying here that they don't owe. That is a big difference.
Yeah, it is a big difference.
That's immensely big difference.
And I have no idea how they answered the.
We have, we have to pull the survey, but I'm pretty sure it's above the wall along. Tree line is so, is in the same situation as the ridge. I mean, we can actually.
So that's.
Yeah, not on district top. The the wall is not all the, that's correct.
The wall is so hot, but the five feet outside is.
No, it's the right of one, it'd be the Lee County right of one.
Well, I don't know, I mean, yeah, it's. A gateway, the five feet outside the wall, the easement's ten feet, five feet in, five feet out. But our ownership goes five feet out also. What you're saying here is the ownership does not go outside.
They not, you have to.
That's a big.
Well, where?
So that's my only hesitation, do you see what I'm going on here?
Bobby, do you want me to look that up between?
Assistant.
Well.
Exactly.
Is there difference in ownership?
Side, just expect that.
No, but, but, you know, we're talking, I was talking about the landscape piece, which is currently there. It's a different issue than ownership.
No, but, but is the landscape easement is what? Going to go back and refresh them and what exactly they ask us for.
Sure, we need a map to see this, because I think what we're talking about is two different agents.
Have a brief return back to you guys and guys, any questions for Russ? Does that work?
Yeah.
Maybe we can work together and look at it, yes, maybe with that. Okay.
We checked, we did every other reason.
Question how?
Yeah.
That was in the twenty twenty five years, is what I.
My my question is that landscape water easement along tree line is BPCA. If they, is it, is it bad? That's where it would be a recent.
Well, we don't own the wall, so.
Well, there is no wall, that's a shame.
Oh, and, alright, alright.
Anything else for Russ? Okay, so we do have, at the March sixth meeting, we do have another workshop, workshop at two.
And it's, it's intended to be the assessment methodology again.
For less photos, yeah, repeated for me. Alright, so we're good, so I, I.